We were still on this stuff and I think we were, next one was Twin Springs Park.
It is? Do I spring for you?
Don't accuse me of stealing. I know exactly where we are. Those eyes did not open. My people were reading all over the day.
That might have been me, but I don't really have any questions.
Actually, there was sort of a general park. Laurie had mentioned that. David, you mentioned it. What's the discussion with Twin Springs?
We'll start with Laurie, she mentioned it.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to say other than it's, if you look all around it, you see houses with no yards. And to me, it feels like that is really a neighborhood park, almost like the North Shore Summit Park for that neighborhood. And so whatever we do, I think it's really important to involve the nearby neighborhoods and maybe how they're using it now will affect me. To me, that is just striking.
So I'm thinking that we really need to figure out what we're gonna do in that park. I mean, there's been some really good ideas over the years. I mean, a frisbee golf course is a great idea. I want to see a connection, or I'd love to see a connection from the park down there up the hillside to the bottom, the parking lot. But Stacy, I think you sent out an email a few months ago with that really fun, fun idea that would fit in that one. Exactly, exactly.
Oh, that is the one I sent from Londonworth.
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's something we could do in that park. I would love to see, because that park is so small, to get some really good creative uses in that park. Okay, Stacy?
So I guess my only comment, it takes us a long time to figure out what we want to do, so just put it where we can open it up, just to open it up minimum, minimum amount of money. We've, you know, we've been promising them that unless we got the property, we'd open up the park and we'd open the parks. That's just my comment is. As soon as we can support it.
I think the challenge is both time and people resources. We have so many things going on that unless we outsource this and get a consultant to develop, I don't know how we can add one more project to our list. And only Rob will be able to really know that. So I'd say if we do start a community outreach to say we want to hear all your ideas, we need to somehow preface it with, this could take some period of time to actually get implemented. Set some expectation, this is a, we're getting your information early, not, we're gonna listen to you and start acting on it. But I just don't think we have the money or the people to make it actually happen. And then there's the issue of how you maintain it after you have it built.
The process we're going through now is, what we're gonna go through is, hey public, what do you want to do for a low-cost interim use? What do we have, a $40,000?
Just to study it though, not to.
Cruz be gone?
Yeah, I just don't want us to get.
Well, I think, first off, we do some of the hillside also.
It was cheap though.
Okay.
Off-leash dog park would be something a lot of people would welcome, but it would be hard to take it away if you want to change it to something else.
It's gonna be fenced. Yeah. Frisbee. In fact, you could just open up the whole park, probably, off-leash dog park.
On the dog park, the thing that concerns me about that is that all that wetland and everything. And I don't think that is conducive to having dog feces and everything else that goes with the messes of the park. And yet, I think a dog park, off-leash dog park, would be a really neat asset to our community. But so many of the locations, you know, that is really environmental.
So you're currently, one big issue that's gonna come up is parking.
That's kind of suburban part of town where it's auto-dominated, there's not a lot of walking and walkability in that part of town. And so I think the users are gonna get there by driving. And we've got nothing for a parking lot there. I'd be interested to see if maybe we could just create some street parking along those back and days. I think that'd be good anyway, with that stretch being so, being as straight as it is. I think it's kind of a place that, it's kind of a straightaway, so I think people are, tend to maybe go a little faster than they should. There, and street parking has a way of kind of slowing people down just like, so that.
I think there's a way for that.
Lauren, did you?
Yeah, I definitely would concur with the street parking. I think that's probably what casual people would be looking for. The church across the street is where people all parked when they were doing the project. So, you know, you see that option, but then you do have people crossing here in the street. So if that happened, I would do a proper flashing thing, so.
At least it's a three-way stop.
Stop sign, yeah.
There is a stop sign.
Yeah, there should be a crosswalk.
So you felt like that'd be, but anyway, but I know that that was something that was utilized for a price and high of probably previous.
David, there's space.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's space right there at the old entrance of the park for about five cars. But I think you can certainly utilize the church parking, you can cross the road, you can, we can kind of deal with them. And because there's a stop sign there, I don't know that right there in front of that park, they're really speeding that fast. Because of the processes going down for the stop sign.
Or they're, they're going north, they're speeding up.
Speeding up.
I don't know, I mean.
Stacy?
Oh, I was just gonna mention there are some spots there. They're all working there.
Okay, anything else?
Is it all blocked off around the coral access? There's parking there.
There is a flat thing there. If you can get that from the road.
You're talking about.
Yeah, you have to drive it.
Or is it that, that two acres that they're observing are keeping? Is that all fenced off and you can't access it?
I think it is fenced off.
I walked in. So I don't know.
No, that road to the port.
Okay, anybody else?
Just two things. So for the, so the planning process. Two things, one is looking at ways to connect the park where people can walk from their neighbors. Two, if there's any opportunities there, that would be different to explore. And also trails, I just believe it's such a beautiful place for trails. And I know there's gotta be a trail up that hill because there's a horse farm there and they rode the horses up there. So to me, it seems like that could be, if there's an interest for the community, you know, in theory, those can be pretty low cost, particularly if there's like a scout project or, you know, something.
Is it Matt Martin?
Yeah, he's successful. He's, he's, he's gotta have those trails going up. I think he makes perfect.
He would probably build a single-handed place, so yes. But I know that there's something already out there and it just, I mean, again, going back to, you've got, you know, young families sometimes. Giant houses, tiny lots, where do they play?
Yeah, I think, I think Doggtown and sports fields are very popular. They are, we may have to work out something, City of Bobble.
Okay. Anything else on this before we move on?
So is there any plan to build minimal aid this year or is that not a specific?
My, my thought is to ask public what they want for a low-cost interim use. Find out what that use is, budget for it, and build it and then open it.
So nothing until then, it sounds like probably 18.
Could somebody walk through that park and probably now, yes. It won't be until we get into that.
Are we reading any?
I think when spring starts, I think we have to start cutting the grass. But there was maintenance people out there, I think, the other, Wednesday.
What would be, what would be the extra cost if we opened up that little wood, through a garbage can in there and what, what else would we have?
So we drafted a memo on that and came to talk to you guys about that.
More than we would expect.
Can people just sort of formally park there right now?
That gate's closed.
I thought there was a hauler there. They keep it from driving up, yeah, they keep it driving up that road.
Both gates are closed. Yeah, I have to.
I don't remember a gate right on the sidewalk.
Oh, it's off the street, but they're, both entries are gated.
It's where they walk.
It's a gated community.
Right, but is that another parking area that are gated?
Yes.
I've never seen two fences there, that's why.
I think it's. Other word, did you have? Okay, St. Edward Ballpark.
I didn't put it on the agenda, but if you want me to talk about it, I could go for 20 minutes. I will. St. Edward's on the list.
So I guess the St. Edward Ballpark for me is, I remember that children's book you gave them, I was looking at this and that. And I feel like that's the path we're on with the state. And it's like, how much is enough to do this? I don't, I don't get it. Why, why can't we cooperate to improve the existing facility without just plowing it on all the stuff?
David, then.
That's the exact question I said, or statement I made to Michael Henkinson the other night. Was, when's this gonna stop? You ask us to do this, we say yes. Then all of a sudden you come back and you say, well, we need to do this now. And then you come back and you say, we need you to do this now. You know, when's it gonna stop? So I'm getting frustrated by that myself. I mean, this is, at some point, it's gotta stop.
And for me, it's a cost issue. As nice as ballfields are, as the millions keep seeming to go up, I, I'm becoming less and less motivated to continue this course at all. And I know we've spent a lot of energy, a lot of consultants, a lot of time, but at a certain point, we just have to say, we lost some money and we just need not do it.
But we've been raising money for it. We've got over $2 million now in grants.
But yeah, do we still, what, $2.5 or $3 million of our own money could be in this thing or how much?
Well, that's, we're about between $150,000 and $200,000 into it of our own money.
I mean, if we finished it, so if we have $2 million in grants, how much is our piece gonna be?
So the grants I'm counting up are $750,000 from RCO and $500,000 from County. So I guess, yeah. 1.25.
1.25.
Is it about $3.5 billion total?
We're coming up on $5 million.
$5 million?
Yeah.
And that's not only operating rate?
And we've got some sources, potentially some, some more money coming in for grants.
Brett and Stacy?
So obviously, this is a big deal to me. It knows me, knows that I'm kind of passionate about it, but on the same hand, I also am realistic enough to realize that there, there is just like everything, there is a point where you have to consistently reevaluate where you are and what needs to be done and how you can afford it. So I guess here's what, this would be what, I guess it's more of a ask than anything, it's like, that we try to get to a point where we can at least know as much as we can know and make a reasonable decision. And if, and if this doesn't work, which I don't like to think that that's possible, but it's reasonable to at least consider, you've gotta have other options. I would just hope that we as a council, I would ask that we don't allow this issue to fall off the radar and that we continue to, because it's, every year it gets more and more expensive. It's never gonna get cheaper, it never will. And I would like just to think that we can at least not continue to kick down the road where we don't have to deal with this in some form or mess, that's basically what it is. I just, my frustration with state parks is incredibly high, but I realize that it's just, you know, that's, I've been there before and I know you guys.
Stacy and then.
Where are we currently on, like, you know, leveling and?
It means to be same.
Testament that you gave for also cost that for the lighting, correct?
So about half million of the cost is lighting.
I just feel like it's, we're going to start to get the lighting, it's just not useful for the cost. There's a whole bunch of costs that kids are out, so.
Okay, Nigel and Brett?
Well, I was, I was, I think this is important, if I don't know, I should start moving. That, that shocked me here. You know, and we, maybe do need to look at lighting or look at the artificial turf, or look at some of what we're asking for to see if we can bring that up. Because unless the magic money fair comes by, I don't know how we get $50,000 or shit, my other thing to ask for. I guess this is, it's important, but this is, this is, I just don't have the time or, parks, it's the idea I'm going for. I'm a little worried, I want this to happen, but I'm getting worried.
And Rob with the demo?
The alternative is, an alternative, I should say, is going and buying land and building a ballfield. So the idea, this, a great idea with secondary, the St. Edward Ballfields is that we're gonna get free land in quotation marks. And therefore save us a ton of acquisition costs. And I still think that if we went out and bought a raw piece of land and built a similar-sized ballfield, there wouldn't be more than $5 million. Two ballfields.
Two.
Yes. So if you're looking at it that way, it's still, I guess, a good deal. However, what's happening is, what I'm realizing is, we're getting free land in exchange for local, getting up local control. What I mean by that is, now what they're wanting to release is what I call reopen our language. So if things aren't, if they get into the lease, if the ballfields get built, we get into the minute, a year or two, three or four or 10. And things aren't just, something's not working, the parking's not working, they want to change our scheduling, or stuff's not working, they can reopen the lease and make us new stuff. And so, plus all the, all the restrictions they're putting on us upfront in the lease on how and when we schedule the field. And all the other, all of the bells and whistles we gotta add to make it work. And so, that's the trade-off I'm finally realizing is, we're trading free land for local control. So part of me, you know, this is a world where we have unlimited funds, which we don't, but part of me just want, would rather just spend the extra few million dollars so that we can have local control. Because the one thing that is the bane of my existence here in Kenmore compared to any others that we have worked for, is in this city, we are so dependent on other jurisdictions for us to get anything done compared to other cities I've worked for. We're so dependent on whether it's King County or the state, or the Rochdale or Park, state parks, or what other, the, the, the inter-local cooperation level here in Kenmore is high. The need for is high compared to San Diego Harbor, which was an island city, you know, isolated out on the, in Harbor, in slot. Where we could just, oh, we want a park, okay, let's go buy a piece of land and build a park and not ask anybody's permission. You know, so it's been, it's been a change forming here in Kenmore, the, the dependence we have on other organizations to get anything done. So I know I'm kind of rambling, I know it's annoying, but my recommendation is to still try to get lease approved. And let the commission be the one to say no. Let the commission be the one to say no, because, not that I want them to say no, I'm still going for the rest, because we got these grants.
Yeah, I don't want to give them any.
And so what the scenario, because they keep tacking on stuff. The latest is all these cottonwood trees that they've just, three days ago, told me are dangerous now. And they want us to do this full assessment of all these cottonwood trees and then they want us to take down the ones that are, could be harmful by falling branches landing on kids. And to me, that's an operational issue that we should figure out once the ballfields are operating. But these folks are so afraid of their shadows that they're thinking about all the what-ifs they can possibly dream up and they're trying to pack them into the lease. I've tried to tell them that the number of what-ifs and the number of what-about-this's are infinite. And that the more this drags on, the more what-ifs and what-about-this's will keep popping up and will never achieve perfection. And that all this stuff, just all these what-ifs and what-about-this, they, these are things that can be handled operationally and that, that they need to put their faith and trust in the people who operate the parks. But they don't see it that way, they think they need to think of every possible contingency and every possible what-if that can possibly happen and build it into the lease. So given where I'm going with this is, I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna put my foot down and say, okay, we're done. We're not gonna say yes to any more of this stuff. Also, I'm not gonna pay $46,000 a year in rent that you want me to pay because we've got the capitalized value that we're bringing. We're fully maintaining it. And you're gonna see a lot more Discover Pass revenues because of this. And so we're not gonna pay you $46,000 a year in rent. And they may not agree with me on that. And I'm just, I'll probably just have to take a lease that staff doesn't agree with me on to the commission and ask them to vote on it. And that'll probably be March or May. And the reason it's, it might be May now is because they're deciding to do a third parking study because the two that were done weren't, weren't enough. And that parking study won't be done until March. But now, that parking study has to be incorporated into SEPA, we can't incorporate it into SEPA until it's done. So SEPA won't start until mid-March. And SEPA takes a couple of months. And so Parks Commission won't vote on anything until SEPA has gone through the whole process. So now we're talking about May, when the Parks Commission can vote on it.
We don't have that.
That was the story.
Yeah, I, I'm watching the room collectively get more depressed. Alan, Nigel, Stacy Milton and David.
Okay, first thing is, this is what, in 11 years on this council, I haven't been able to get used to. The government think and risk aversion of government and all the red tape and hoops that you gotta jump through to get anything to happen. And as we've seen, the incremental demands that they're putting on us with this, there's no end to them. And at some point, we put our foot down. And I think we need a BATNA. And a BATNA, best, what does that mean, best available alternative or something? Mark Conley suggested that we use Twin Springs and retain walling, cutting into the hillside to get enough space for ballfields. Might be cheaper than buying more land. That's one possibility. Buying land, having an alternative, and then the thought of, of all the Discover passes that are coming in because of this. And that just goes into their general revenue and they're giving us no credit for that. And I would think that, that we ought to get the lease rent-free and maybe even a kickback on all those Discover passes that are gonna be sold by the people using the ballfields. And I think we should start making our own demands of them. Now, I've mentioned this to Rob and Rob says, well, that may be what they want. They're not really that eager for us to build ballfields. And maybe they're looking for an out and maybe they feel that they're, they're putting all these demands on us hoping we'll go away. I don't know. But it's a, it's a tricky game to play.
In their defense, they're, what they're saying is, the new Discover Pass revenue equals the value of rent that they should charge us for the dirt. So those two cancel each other out. And the $46,000 a year that they want to charge us has to do with added operational costs of Rangers checking parking and picking up all the litter we're gonna generate and cleaning, and cleaning restrooms from, from our added activity. And they think that's $46,000 a year. But my analysis shows that they have the value of the land too high. And even if you take down their Discover Pass revenue estimate, I'm showing that they're money ahead even if they absorb their new, their added operational costs. So I've made that case to them. They haven't given it a close look, even though I made that case to them a couple of months ago.
Nigel, Stacy, Milton, David.
I mean, maybe the problem is we're focused too much on this one project because this was in front of us. Maybe we need to be looking at the idea of ballfields more holistically. Maybe we have, involved in the past. But we have a new school superintendent, we have new folks in the school board. The schools have fields, there are some hard fields, but they have fields. And maybe it's worth talking to them about doing a similar deal. And maybe we make a part of our bonus discussion with them about, uh, two things, and how that works and tie the two things together. I'm sure we could, I mean, I probably know more than I would about this, but I, there have to be some fields in the schools in Kenmore that we could get up to par for leagues use. The schools would have a better field to play on during, during the week. We would have things available on the weekends and evenings for, for leagues. And I think the school issues probably need you to deal with from the state, from the state parks. And it takes away a lot of the political pressure around the state park and all of that too. So maybe it's time to, especially if this sort of stuff continues to take march, maybe it's time to start looking at other alternatives.
Stacy Milton, David?
Just a, a comment on your comment. Most of the school fields are used already and packed all the way until it's dark, so.
School fields are used for what, did you say?
For soccer, for baseball, for that, they're all getting used, they're all subpar, you know, not for the dirt, but they're already full. NYSA, you know, all, all the leagues, the practices for little kids are pretty much in every school field, so timing would be.
If you got turf and mine.
Right, that, that's the thing, there is.
The things are extended.
There is capacity and potential.
It's just that they're not empty right now, that's I guess my only comment. It's not like we're gonna be creating new space in the afternoons. It would just be on a better field rather than making more capacity. I'm worried about the reopening language that you said. And I would like us to hopefully not allow that to happen because once we start putting money into it, we're stuck and whatever they ask for, we have to say no. So that's a problem.
So in the lease that I, that I bring forward to the commission, I will have that exed out or modified.
Milton, then David?
So before any final lease is signed, the council will have to approve it, is that correct? And we still have to actually fund the $3.75 million. It's, it's not been put in a budget anywhere.
That's right.
So I think that's another big issue. If, if they said yes tomorrow, it still has to get through this council and decide if we want to spend $5 million, of which 1.25 is not our money. But, but I think that's a major assumption that it's going to pass this council at that price.
David and Stacy?
Yeah, on these parking studies, I mean, you've had, we've done two parking studies already. They both come up with the same results, now we're asked to do a third. I, I, there's gotta be a point where we said we've done it. We've tried it.
So maybe just put a cover of feet on the second one and give it back to them.
Yeah.
Or you average the two, I don't know.
Stacy?
What did you just talk about?
The funding has not been here.
The start of the lease, that's what I was gonna ask. If we, if for some reason there's a rent that we have to pay, do we have to start paying it at the start of the lease? If we, if for some reason there's a rent that we have to pay, do we have to start paying it at the start of the lease or when we actually build the ball field?
A later.
Okay, that's important.
Yeah.
Anything else on this? Okay, let's move along then.
But I'm still gonna try and get Parks Commission approval on something. And you guys will be kept closely informed along the way.
And we can go out actively seeking other monies and not start anything until we have.
Okay, O and M on parks, you, Lori as well, I think in the general, in all.
O and M for parks, yeah.
Was that yours too?
Okay, operating maintenance for parks. So we're getting new parks. It's on the budget. So I guess the question becomes, you know, how do we approach this? I mean, do we know how much we need, what are our options and stuff like that? So that was really why I wanted to get on the list.
And Stacy, you wanted to on the list as well.
What she said. You know, and it all kinda goes, well, it's all still in my mind of, you know, adding the squires landing and ball fields are unfunded and this is unfunded and I feel like there's a.
So basically, where's the money coming from and how we're gonna do that, is that, okay?
Correct. So I, I absolutely agree. This wasn't my issue, but I remember this came up a couple of retreats ago, I believe. And if this was one of those things where we're do, we're really making so much progress and so many great park projects, but we've never really, really, never really addressed the, the other side of it. And I think you guys did a stat number where you let us know something. You updated us on ways that it could be funded. And I don't really recall, other than obviously just, you know, there's general fund revenue. But there was another, there were other means and I don't recall what they all were. But I do think it is something, we're at a point where, and these are really good quality investments we're making. And it's like, we really don't want to see them deteriorate. You know, I drive by Town Hall, great example. And it's like, if you look at that building, that stained cedar and fir on the exterior, it's like, that's high maintenance stuff. When you look at it, it's beautiful, but it's beautiful for a year and a half unless you maintain it and, or whatever, a couple of years. And, and so I see stuff like that and I go, yeah, these are, this is a big deal, actually, when you start thinking about. But I don't know what all the options are, other than you say, okay, we gotta raise funds here or raise a tax here. I don't know if there's something, there's a mechanism or I don't recall.
Do you want me to respond?
I think it would be one of those.
So the city's done a great job, I think, absorbing new parks without having to significantly raise taxes or increase the general fund revenues. So think of all the, at least in the four or five years I've been, we think about all the new parks that we've added and absorbed, just absorbed into the budget. North Shore Summit Park, the Tweet property. What else? We're about to absorb the town green into the, to this YIM's budget. Help me out.
Well, Twin Springs, depending on what happens.
Yeah. Those are the ones we've already absorbed. So just one bit of background. When I, when I was in Gig Harbor, I could tell that there was capacity that could be absorbed into this, into the park system. I could, we had quite a few maintenance workers on staff. And so we added a bunch of parks and I think we were, we added like five or six downtown public restrooms. And several significant parks we built while I was there. And we actually cut the maintenance crew by three people. And so that was kind of the mindset I had coming to Kenmore is, you know, just adding, adding an additional park doesn't necessarily mean we need to raise taxes or something or hire more people. There's, every bureaucracy has, has an absorption rate or absorption capacity. And, but I think we're not saturated. I think we've reached our absorption capacity. Jennifer Gordon will tell you that we maxed it out quite a while ago. And so I think adding new facilities, the name of the game is bringing up new resources from now on. And it'll have to be, and, and it'll have to come through three areas. One is new taxes. The other is cutting other stuff that's in the general fund. And the third is improving and creating efficiencies. And so we're actually going to be doing the, you know, we're going through the Public Works Maintenance Services Analysis with FCS, that firm that we hired. And I'm actually optimistic that they're gonna find efficiencies. They know that their marching orders are not to make the budget bigger. They, they know their marching order to sort of say, what's efficient, what's not efficient? What contracts are you, could you be spending your dollars better on? And then they're gonna be coming up with some recommendations that I hope will create some efficiencies. And then with, when it comes to walkways and waterways, those two roads and the three parks, for me, it was just too far in the future to be able to say whether we would need to increase taxes or what we would need to fund, do to find those resources to maintain those parks. So in other words, it's, it was kind of a mental punt on my part. Cause I just thought twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three was just too far in the future to know what resources and what the revenue sources were gonna be to maintain those parks. So I'm not giving you much of an answer, other than there's several areas we can look to, to maintain those parks when they come online. The immediate one that's gonna be needing new resources really soon is more lands. So we hope to get construction, get on, get started on construction that, on that this summer. And then it'll be all online in twenty eighteen. And that's gonna be a high level of maintenance.
But won't the school district be either funding a orbit or a significant portion of that maintenance?
Yeah, so we, we hope to get a, a revenue stream from them to help with a portion of it, yeah.
Okay, Alan, then Stacy.
Where was I? Oh. We'd have a fund for replacement of equipment, vehicles. And so we pay a certain amount into that fund every, every year. So that ultimately, when this SUV boots out ten years from now, we've got the money to buy a new one. Do we, have we started doing that same thing with physical plant? Anticipated future maintenance, like a new roof for.
City Hall.
Yeah, City Hall, yeah, planting a new roof, yeah. Or on the, on the, on the hangar building. Yeah, maybe there's some periodic maintenance, like pressure washing everything, something that has to be done periodically. Are we planning putting money inside every, every month or, or at least yearly to fund those future needs?
For maintenance issues, the answer is yes, we plan and budget for those. For new roofs, no, we don't have a equipment savings account like we do for vehicles.
Well, that's one of the things that my opponent in one election suggested that we should be doing. And, you know, where do you get the money? When we were talking about the bridge, yeah, we could have been setting money aside to build this bridge. But then when we get to the point where needed to build a bridge and we go out for grant revenue and we get it funded through the grant revenue, why were we setting money aside? But a new roof, you're not gonna get a grant to put a new roof on City Hall. And it would, it's, it would be a significant uplift to do that. We plan, we budget for asphalt overlays. Certain, certain amount every year we're gonna do based on what we can budget.
Take that as a badge, then Stacy.
When do we expect to get into the net uses of this kind of a discussion on how we're gonna pay it?
The O and M?
Yeah. My mind is just having a hard time adding a ball field, adding a squires landing and adding all this and this huge thing is looming and I'm just curious. If that's a this year, the next year?
Um, we were thinking twenty eighteen when we're talking about the next YIM.
It's gonna be a budget discussion right now, but.
So I guess doesn't, were you adding things like a ball field that's gonna be more O and M? Adding as far as, I think it's gonna have a heck of a lot of maintenance if you wanna keep that restoration, is that? Or are you, are we just putting that entire conversation to later?
Uh, no, I think about it a lot.
Before we have that conversation, okay.
But not enough to force him to drink.
What do you mean?
He's calming down that root here.
So you don't have the specifics to have the dollars, but it sounds like by reviewing the Public Works contracts and the consultant, I mean, for efficiencies, that's one aspect, right? And then it sounds like there is a little bit of time window in terms of whether to, before the parks come. And then, but then the, the third one, not raising revenue or increasing taxes, we don't have a, um, I don't see that as something I just wanna do. But it'd probably, at some point, even in our budget discussion, it'd be good to see what our options are there.
Yeah, for sure. Do we, so knowing this and knowing that the coordination and maintenance that we work with Lake Forest Park on, is it, is it possible we're getting to a point where we could be more efficient by just concentrating on our own staff, on our own maintenance?
Talking about taking things in-house?
Yeah. Or not necessarily working with Lake Forest Park. I don't know, and I'm not saying it's a bad dream. I'm just wondering if, if we're growing at this, we're seeing this need, if that's going to be part of the conversations? Maybe it's not a coordinated effort as it has been in the past.
It could be, it's something that comes out of the study, yeah.
Okay, so I'm hearing it's looming. And there's three areas that you can deal with this on in sometime soon, Alan.
Well, you mentioned taxes. A levy lift, for example, raising the property tax, an operations levy.
More bank capacity.
We have the bank capacity too. Whether that's gonna be enough to take care of it, I don't know.
It's almost like four hundred thousand dollars or something.
So, so is this detail, I'm hearing some folks say.
Four hundred thousand?
Correctly, if I'm wrong, that you're wanting at some point, expecting a detailed conversation about really what you're looking at here, what, what you're facing and then maybe the array of ways to manage it. I don't want to go over it, but I'm kinda hearing the, the.
And it seems like the question we're asking is, do we really wanna wait two years till we do a budget? Or do we want that information sooner?
So we can start planning now.
Yeah. Okay, so this little study that we have right now, is that gonna answer the questions? How big is the dollars value that we're gonna need when all these parks come online?
Are they looking for new parks?
They are. They're gonna do that, yeah.
And what's that do, what's that study do?
Uh, I think next couple of months.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we said we can just wait.
Okay, so the answer is it's got.
Some information, right?
So by the mid, by our budget, our mid-year budget thing, we could, we could have some more details.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be very much helpful.
Yes, we're gonna get.
Right. Can I tell you what we said about M and O and walkways, waterways?
Yeah, sure.
So it's under frequent, frequently asked questions. Does, does the measure include maintenance for the projects? Cost to maintain a new park, bike lane and sidewalk improvements after construction will be added to existing facility maintenance costs. Because the city is already providing maintenance services for these three parks and two roads, the city anticipates an incremental increase in maintenance costs starting in the early twenty twenties after a project completion. The city is currently conducting a thorough parks and public works maintenance services analysis with the goal of improving and creating efficiencies in the way resources are allocated to park and road maintenance activities. The services analysis will include future improvements from this bond measure. In addition, general contractors who will construct these improvements will be required to provide plant establishment and warranties for one to two years after project completion. Lastly, volunteerism at city parks has grown substantially in recent years and has proven to be a valuable supplement to park maintenance resources. The city's park volunteer program will continue to grow and will likely help further offset maintenance costs at these three waterfront parks on this bond measure.
All set.
Okay, questions, comments?
Well, I do have one comment. And I just, I can't think of enough third, being positive, dotting some and actually, you know, working towards how do we do this? Because I, I've watched over the years where, you know, state parks is, is probably gonna be leasing part of their, you know, building because they can't afford to maintain it. The county parks, King County was giving us their parks, that's how we got their parks because they couldn't afford to maintain it. And so now we're down to you little city, figure this out, right? So, you know, so the fact that, you know, it's not an easy thing, but, you know, we're, we're looking, you're, you know, have the ball rolling, working towards it. I feel like this should be a punt, come on now. But anyway, I, I just don't wanna be, you know, the people that, that don't maintain the parks. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Next topic, moves forward, a joint jurisdictional meetings, if this is the outcome as to do that. I think several, well, actually. When I did the interview, Alan wanted to talk about that primarily. I think your main issue was, are we gonna continue doing it and, yeah, so do you?
But also, isn't it also the school board and other jurisdictions?
Yeah, the new school board, the new superintendent, I'd like to hear from her. I would like to, in the next few months, have a joint meeting with Bothell City Council. Get to talk about what we're doing, what they're doing, where she, that city manager's coming from.
And we need another one to play Forest Park because of the rear chain.
We could do all three together. One time we did, gosh, Bothell and Kenmore and Wooden Hill. And the school district all together, it's kinda chaotic, it's a little bit too much. I would rather just have two at a time, but maybe not, I don't know. But I think we have enough in, in commonality and problems that we need to be talking to each other more than we do and getting to know each other more than we do.
We need one more than you need to.
Okay, Milton, then Nigel.
I know another one that we talked about at times is meeting with the tribe.
Yeah.
That related to our waterways.
Yep, we have to go down there to do it, but yes.
It's, it's all about relationships. The more you meet people and know face to face, and know their names and the issues, the more likely you'll come to good ends.
Nigel?
I say yes, and I also would add, we might talk about Kirkland at some point. Cause they are, they are our neighbor now for the last couple of years. We should get to know them a little better, so. But I think it's a positive.
Uh, David?
Yeah, I mean, certainly with the tribe, I, I've agreed with that. And I went down and actually had the meetings with Virginia, I think her name is. Anyway, with, with the tribal chair. And they're all in favor. We just need to go down there and have the meeting and.
Even if it's only once, even if it's only once a year.
Yeah, exactly.
It does, it's intent, that's important.
Okay. All right, the next topic, and I have to ask a question on this before. You do not need to go into exactly.
I don't know, I don't know a qualifying reason to go into the exact session.
Okay.
I'm happy to talk about it.
I'm happy to, or we can skip it if it's.
We can skip, this is falling on me, I'm happy to skip it unless there's something really.
What was the topic again?
Murphys.
Murphy's.
Future Murphy's. I can give you an update.
Okay.
Sure.
So they had this idea to, you know, that vacant land that they purchased a couple of years ago? They have this idea in order to not do all the required improvements to turn it into a playfield that the public could use. And then they would use it for parking for their auctions that happen six or eight times a year. Yeah, in order to do that and to, in order to be excused from the regulations, they would need to do a development agreement with the city. And so the ball is in their court to do a. And so the ball is in their court to, um, do a, to apply for what we call a threshold decision. And what that means is it's not a development agreement, it's your, a threshold decision is your permission to start working on the development agreement. And so they would come to you with the high level concept of what they want to do, and, and it's like a two hundred dollar application fee for them. And then you as council can say, nah, I don't want to explore it, or yeah, let's explore the development agreement. It doesn't mean you're saying yes to the development agreement, it just says, it just says, okay, start negotiating a development agreement and bring one back to us.
Okay.
Stacy?
What does, what's the minimum amount of information that needs to be in that application in my grade? They'd say what they wanted with the tools and that they use for, would, would the word sidewalks either be there or?
Brian would explain to you what, um, under normal circumstances, the requirements they'd have to comply with including a sidewalk.
And then they would say what the deviations at a high level are from.
I think so, yeah.
Okay. The other question, come on, sit.
I, I have one question that, and I realize this will get to a, a development agreement if it gets to that point, but I, I, I will say that's the one street that it's just hard for me to, I mean, I'm, I'm saying this to set a reasonable expectation, he talked about, but I, I can't see us deviating much from our sidewalk requirements. It's not such a substandard street. It's probably one of the worst streets in the city and, and as far as just danger wise and everything, and so that, that's my only thought on it.
Lori and then, David.
Yeah, I, I think I've made similar comments directly to you about, but, you know, especially since regarding sidewalks, because we've, we've asked people to basically pay for sidewalks and we made that such a priority that I think it would be important to continue, continue that. So my question is, is, is what you've heard last from, from, from Murphy's is that they want to do some, basically a hard grassy field? Okay, so to me, I mean, at least visually, that feels like that could be a wonderful amenity for people that live in the area, so it could be a positive. So, I mean, in that sense, I think that would be a, a public benefit.
David, uh-huh.
Yeah, that could be, I think.
Sure.
Well, David, then Milton.
Yeah, that, that was my point, I mean, if we can get sidewalks put in there, it's going to help the street, and a large grassy field that we, I mean, that skate park that we have is such a huge hit that to have a grassy field there for, for play, I think would be a tremendous asset to the community, especially right across the street from, from all the neighbors there, so I see that as a tremendous benefit to the community.
Milton, then Nigel.
So as I look at our council goals, you know, sidewalks and walkable downtown are the ones that relate to the issue the most. And it seems like there's nothing there for us to pursue, it's totally, totally in that port. Do they want to do something or not, and then we will respond accordingly.
Uh, Nigel?
Yeah, I'm not wanting to budge on the sidewalk requirements on, on that street, there's too many families, it's, it's too busy, it's, it's, yeah. That's an absolute.
Okay, I've heard your consensus on that, so. Okay, anything else on this one?
Is it big enough for a ball field?
Can't work on a ball field.
No, no, I, I, you know, if we get a towing place to.
You know, you need three acres for a good ball field, and I think it's about three acres.
But you have to fence it because you don't want balls hitting the street.
Well, you certainly don't want people parking on it six times a year.
Yeah, no, people parking, so.
Do both of the next great parking for the ball field, it doesn't solve the problem.
It's temporary.
And there's a better use for that, there's a better use for that land, it's been, the downtown plan has already defined that.
Okay, anything else on this one?
It's not off the table.
Okay. Do you need a quick break? Good, all right, we're down, we're, we're only twenty-four minutes behind. I'm feeling better, brother. Uh, we're now, we're at the section set aside for goals, and unlike any other folks that I work with, you have an interesting history of looking at your goals and tweaking them using a discussion process. I guess the first order of business there would be to ask you to revisit your goals, and I would ask if there are substantive changes that you need to and want to make? And we have kind of had a discussion on this over, over time, or we can go through a more mechanistic process, which you have decided not to do in the past, but, but to, to re-prioritize even re-identify goals. So the first question would be to look at your goals and say, is there something here that's been finished that we can pull off? David?
Yeah, ST three is, is finished, we just need to monitor it and make sure we get what we want, but it's been voted on past, number five.
So related to that, actually, I would say that instead of taking it off, that we change it to actively assist and monitor the company, the three projects along that.
But I don't know that you should stay at number five.
Yeah, I don't put that as, put it down.
Actively assisted monitor, that's, I'll say ST three.
So late points, number four.
But, okay, I want, so if, if, I'm not hearing yank it off, I'm hearing you want to keep it here, but, but adjust it to, now I heard agreement, actively assisted and monitor Sound Transit three projects for five twenty-two.
But you know, I, I would be happy leaving where it is, I mean, and looking at these eight goals, I was, I, I, I can't think of anything that would replace what's there.
Well, do we, do we need to move parks number six, even though it's park improvement plan, but do we need to jump that up above, um, ST three since we've got all these parks we're talking about with walkways and waterways and ball fields and twin springs? Seems like there's a lot more to do there than there is a budget to.
Lauren, on that topic, Lauren?
Yeah, I, I was definitely going that direction as well, because it feels like, you know, with the passage of the bond, you know, implementing the walkways and waterways projects is the next huge step, and it's, it's not clear that that's what we're doing.
Uh, and Brett on that topic?
Yeah, that's it, I agree.
So, so the idea would be to switch, uh, move number six to number five, just real quick?
Number five to number six.
Five, switch five to six.
But reword five.
Right, reword block five, but move it to number six.
It seems to be like. It's too bad Rob's not here right now.
Nigel? I don't know, I, I, I think Subtransit three implementation is going to take almost as much work or more than getting the projects on there, so I worry about taking off Rob's top five because we all know that that's what he stares at every day. I would argue that actually we could move down the mitigation for state impacts on city transportation system, that's a nice thing, but we're frankly, the chance of us getting anything meaningful out of that is not particularly high. I would squeeze that out of number six and keep ST three in the top five.
So, I want to get this down, Nigel?
I mean, it's symbolic, but realistically, we're not.
So four to six. Five, four.
No, no, no.
Three, wait.
Three to six. Three to, is, is, the suggestion is three to six and keep.
And just move the others up.
Yeah, and move others up.
This is where we need a little piece of paper.
Well, no matter what we do, just talk a little bit, like, keep those, and then we can, we can make it more.
At that point, was four and five are both within the top five, I don't know that.
I don't know. As long as you don't mess with sidewalks, I'm happy.
You and me both, brother, you and me both.
Any other, uh, cause, Milton?
Number seven to address watershed and water quality issues affect the city. Uh, I guess it doesn't feel like we do much on that, so, you know, if we're looking at becoming more technologically advanced and moving things along and innovation and all that, it should number eight and number seven be switched.
Be switched?
Switched, I wouldn't drop it off, but it just feels like it's sort of a back burner issue, it's just barely on the top eight. We haven't had.
You know, it's a huge issue, so it's small.
We haven't had a ten year flood in at least three years, so, so it feels less crucial to be right now.
Yeah, but there's huge issue, it's small creek.
Change everything's to it, Rob.
Uh, we have accomplished something there with, with a low impact development thing that Richard Sawyer just recently presented to us. It's a major project over the years, and something was done sort of in the background, it's not something that everybody in the community sees, but it's something that really needs to be done. And the same thing with the rest of that goal, really, it's not other than flood control.
Okay.
I don't feel wrong, I don't feel wrong.
It's still something we need to be working on.
I just bring it up.
Okay, so the idea was to switch seven to eight, eight to seven?
But doesn't sound like this.
On that topic.
On that topic.
Uh, Lori, David and Stacy.
What exactly is the topic?
The topic is, do we switch seven to eight and make eight to seven?
I wouldn't, and the reason why is, um, it's not just the watershed, it's the water quality, you know, that's a big issue right now with the pandemic.
Okay, uh, David?
Yeah, I mean, we've got to remember there was a lawsuit against Boeing for some illegal parking lot that we were somewhat involved with.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, the lawsuit or illegal parking?
The, the lawsuit. And so, um, in talking with the Snohomish County exec, he wants to meet and talk about, um, surface water issues between the two jurisdictions. And they know the rough that we're getting down here at the end, he's, he's wanting to talk to us about, uh, on staff level, so, um, yeah, I, I think this is, this is still very important, because we're getting done on from Snohomish County, both on O five six and from Swamp Creek. We're getting tons of sediment coming down that's seriously affecting us.
Okay, so on the topic of moving it from, from seven to eight, you're saying, no, just leave it as, leave it as it is, okay. Uh, Stacy and Brett?
I have a question on eight, what do we really want out of that? I mean, everybody wants to have a contemporary information technology program. I feel like that goal should be maybe more specific, we have something more specific that we want to have done, or, I mean, that's just part of doing business, really.
We want the Wi-Fi to work.
I, I guess I'm, I feel like, yes, every, every city needs to do that, and everything else needs to do that, does that make any people? And because it helps you if it is a goal.
Or there's some action, I think so would be.
Yeah, I think the biggest one right now is implementing our new tower technology, uh, finance software program. That's coming in as we speak, and that's going to be so cool. Like, just a small example is there will no longer be paper time sheets.
We're cutting edge.
Okay. On the topic is, do we need to still have IT number eight stated, Lauren?
So I think yes, because technology and updating technology is always going to be important. However, I wonder if maybe rewording it, because this is what you said, you know, for example, we're not going to have paper time sheets, that's a huge efficiency, like, like, like persons, you know, write it out, collect it, do something with it. So, you know, there might be a way to capture that, you know, to, you know, we still say efficient and effective or something. So, so, yeah, we, we still want to keep making progress.
So, and it'll be Brent and David, but just to remind us that the purpose of goals is, is not that you wouldn't do something in this area, but is to emphasize that you're going to do something in this area. And the point that Stacy's raising is to that point, is, is, are, is, are you sufficiently committed to a, a continuous improvement in, in work, contemporary IT program that you no longer need to state it? Because when you first started, you said we need to be doing more in this area, you wanted an emphasis, so you would receive that as, okay, I, I need it. So that's the question you're really raising, are, are we sufficiently, have we sufficiently established the commitment to a progressive, ongoing IT program that we no longer need to state it? That's a question I would like to use for the answer, in either way. Alan?
I think it's an ongoing need, and maybe to really make it more meaningful, you need to put a why in there. Why are we doing it? To increase, I would think off the top of my head, increase efficiencies and transparency. Why else do we have the system? Efficiency and productivity and.
Okay.
Just a couple of reasons.
Brett and David on this?
Can you tell me what number, number four of the current goals, where is that in the list right now that you have for a list of, you ordered?
Number four.
Yeah, number four.
Number four has not changed.
Okay, so it's still number four?
Well, no, no, number four would be number three, because three would then.
Okay.
Okay, because, because of what now?
Four would go, four is now three, because three would.
Okay, actually, that's good, and that's, that's kind of where I was going, and then the other thing, I think you've already addressed it, I know, is the watershed and water, water quality, I don't think, definitely not dropping it lower. I didn't think it appears in the hazard.
Okay.
So, so back to the question of number eight.
Chris?
I, I still think eight, sixteen, we're months away from opening the, the hangar in the park. I'm not convinced that we're going to have any Wi-Fi connection over there by the time that.
Beret's been working on it.
Huh?
Beret's been working on it.
I'm looking at, at how long it's been taking to get Wi-Fi or to get improved internet connections over at the, the, the business engineer. I, I mean, it's just taking months and months, and I'm just not understanding what, what the difference is.
Thank you, Ben, we're waiting on Comcast, but the, the hangar building won't be waiting on Comcast.
Well, Wi-Fi, I mean, if I, if my, it doesn't even, wouldn't even fall under, we're talking about contemporary information technology.
And that's all part, that's all part of it.
I know, but I mean, I would think Wi-Fi should be under the, what are the basic services you provide as a city in your public space? I mean, that's, to me, that's, it's, it's at such a different level.
To me, it's all the same.
Yeah.
To me, it's all the same. Because you can't have a fancy open windows, you don't have a way to access them.
Oh, I agree, I just think it should even be a question that we have Wi-Fi.
Yeah, it's basic infrastructure.
Right.
I, I just think number eight seems like such a weird inside back office priority to have on our public goals. You know, like, like, we don't call out public safety on this anywhere, but we're calling out IT, it just seems really kind of odd. As far as like, things we want to do this year, well, what, what does it mean? You know, it's not spelled out and there's nothing, like, when do we cross that one off?
Probably never.
Right.
If it's acceptable now.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, I've never been a hundred percent comfortable with that one.
With, with, with IT?
With, yeah, I just think it feels squishy in back office, and yeah, it's something that needs to be done, but so is public safety, which we obviously have here.
Right.
And which we always say is our top priority, right?
Right.
You know, not that I'm, not saying we need to put, put public safety on there, but, um.
Right, in, in past discussions about how you use your goals, the top goals did not suggest that you wouldn't be doing other things at a, at a higher threshold level. But it provides a focus, and often for you, it's, it's served two things, it's either developmental focus, we need to do more here, or it's a project focus, we need to continue to follow, five twenty-two was an example that over time, so, and I remember the years when sidewalks were not quite.
Number twenty-two.
Yeah, 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 and they, and they just kept.
Twenty-two goals.
Oh, it was really low, oh, yeah.
But you had twenty-two goals?
No, no, not with me around.
We started like that.
Yeah, yeah, it started like that, but it wasn't, that was.
We kind of doubt, sure, sure.
That was my reaction.
I mean, if I want, if I, if I need something, if I'm on internet service, I'm asked, I'll, I'll Comcast, I pick up the phone, call Comcast, I want this, and boom, you know? Within a week or two, they're there doing it.
I think one of the things about this stating this is if you had initiatives where you really wanted to be seen as a community that was high tech, so that where you, if you went there or you had efficiency, you know, I don't, we.
So the finances of efficiency, we're getting that in.
Right, but remember your goals serve two values or two objectives at least, one, have expressive value, so you're telling people, this is what's important to us during this time period. But they also shape the way you've designed your system, actions at the delivery level, so you, you expect movement in these particular areas. So in this case, years ago, this was a developmental goal, you felt you weren't doing enough in this area and wanted to be doing. Alan?
One thing that's been talked about for some time is citywide broadband.
Yeah.
That's, that would be under this as well, sort of generally, and, um, that, uh, even the, the payroll or the, the finance program we're implementing here increases efficiencies and accuracy and transparency and all those things. And who knows what's going to pop up as, as an available kind of technology in the next year or two? And should we be poised with a goal to take advantage of whatever comes along?
Do we need a goal?
Right, see, that's, that is the question.
Yeah.
If it advances this goal, if it advances the increase in the technology.
Won't we always want to take advantage of?
Increases efficiency and productivity and transparency, you can think of other ones, so, not to my ears.
I can't imagine a scenario where us as a city, in this day and age, we would not always. I can't imagine a scenario where us as a city, in this day and age, we would not always want to do whatever is the most technologically practical, economically driven solution to.
Well, if it just came to this financial package that we're.
It's a tiny.
Okay, I've got a bunch of conversation going on.
That comes from our top doc, where he sees me as the city. So, there's arguments for keeping it, arguments for not needing it, I guess we would ask, do we want it?
It's not top goal, and it's not really a top priority, and therefore it can go to the bottom.
I'm okay to just leave it number eight.
Yeah, remember too, that you've kept, you've kind of kept the eight, try to hopefully have to keep less than ten.
We have twelve, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
You've got bullet points.
Right.
Look at number two.
But, so right now, so I'm hearing you say, okay, you can keep it, it's not, I'm hearing a hard, fast yank it.
Yeah, I'm not hard over on that, I don't feel it's incredibly helpful, but.
I'd say it's very different than back to what we didn't even have a website, and we were really pushing to get some visibility.
And you didn't have, you didn't have a long term, there's a bunch of stuff you didn't have, you weren't, your council chambers weren't up to stuff where you wanted it to be.
We didn't have our budgeting program.
Right, 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 so this has caused that to continue to be an emphasis.
Well, in that sort of way, it's also something that.
I would say leave it at eight, but let's think about rewarding it, and I've heard, so I actually even have suggested phrasing, and I basically am fracturing it from what Ellen said, but we can say something in effect that to continue to leverage technology or leverage, you know, the technological advances to improve, unless, you know, our efficiency, productivity, you know, transparency, that kind of. Because that's basically what we've been doing. And again, I think we should have a place to say it, but.
But you can just have a continuous IT improvement.
Dang, I was looking forward to playing that game.
And he figured that out, he stacked the deck.
No, yeah.
So much respect for Rob.
He's been wrong.
Mel. So, we had some discussion yesterday about gathering information, this is under the topic of economic development.
I don't think we've finished.
Oh, are we done?
Are we even reword eight?
So Lori had a proposal, I feel like Lori had a proposal rather than.
Can we write it out?
Yes, would you like it to be, Lori?
You've reversed it. The goal, the goal is to improve the efficiency and transparency and accuracy and productivity with the maximum use of available and future technology.
I like the way.
You have, very simply, I like the way.
Well stated, so, what did you say?
Well, the first part was to continue to leverage technology or technological advances to improve. And then I think I had efficiency.
Productivity.
Productivity, and then transparency.
Okay.
Right down to what Lori said that we can think about.
Say it again, Lori. He's only got con.
You ever rip down, you ever rip down?
The bottom of my goal, how about I write?
How about you do it, Lori, Lori, Lori?
I'll do, you guys figure it out, I'll write it, you run it to her, it's how to go through it.
All right.
Well, I could, see, you read that right.
I can. To continue. To leverage. Technology. To improve. Productivity, excuse me, to improve efficiency. Productivity. And transparency.
It's like a run to our place, nothing gets done without IT being involved. So if you're going to do a lean project, IT is there.
There's an IT lens.
IT is always there.
Right, okay.
That is so true.
Appreciate that.
Sure. Thank you, thank you for the tea, Mark.
Okay. Mel.
So this was under the topic of economic development, we talked yesterday about maybe gathering some data that we could to provide for somebody who wanted to do some commercial development town, say, here's all this leakage. So something, and I hope that I have a word quite right, would gather data necessary for development of commercial space.
Just another bullet.
Another bullet under two. And I'd be probably happy to even take off a bullet if we needed to.
So those four bullet points, just, I'm sure everybody's remembered or may not, but those were from, those were taken directly from the economic development plan from two thousand nine, so we could just, that's where they came from. It wasn't something we just correct, create, created on our own. So, can you say that again?
Gather data necessary for development of commercial space. And I'm not sure I captured it quite right, but, and I'd be even happy to take off some of the other bullets, because like, promote the image of Kenmore, I think we have a pretty good sense, it'll pretty much on track. And I don't think anything is going to disway us from that, so if we wanted to keep our bullets kind of down, I wouldn't mind it.
And would you give me a bullet again, please, gather data.
Gather data necessary or required for development of commercial space. So it doesn't imply we're going to develop it, it's just we're going to gather the data, where's the leakage? Basically, we're looking at leakage, and how, what data can we have to help somebody hopefully develop a business plan?
You can put it and, the word and, then you're saying sector support system businesses and collect data.
Yeah, so.
If you didn't want us to. I don't know.
Okay.
It's a wee bit different.
Our folks are okay with that.
Yeah, it is.
It's a little different.
Lori?
Well, there are two things I remember from the discussion with Nancy, I think was here. One was, we, it seemed like there was a real resonance on recruiting new businesses. That seemed to really have some timeliness and all that, and so that, what's, what helps my own person suggesting is a piece of aspect of doing that, so I'm wondering if really the goal isn't about recruiting new businesses? And, you know, we've already got support existing, so then we have that interesting word, how do you do that recruit new and support existing? I mean, I don't know that's.
No, that's.
I would do several bullets.
So I would add, no, you're hit a right, because that was actually the first thing I wrote down, and I wrote right after, you know, talking about it, it was tangible meeting, or tangible metrics for business recruitment and incubator graft, and that's not how it needed to be written. I was just saying, that was my notes, that was the concept, I was trying to grasp how, how we can get there in a way. And it doesn't, metrics isn't actually the right word for something, like, is their goal, but it's, it's trying to create tangible information on what's happening with the businesses that either we're not getting or that we're losing through the incubator. They're trying to figure out how to get them here and get, I'm not phrasing it correctly. Stacy and then Ellen on this.
So on, on this, I think, one part of me might be this, I guess, we wanted this data not necessarily to recruit existing businesses as much as to show developers, this is what you want to create office space for our existing more new businesses here. So, because we, we could recruit till the day, you know, to the end of the year, we still want to make our quota.
Also want data on higher incubator systems going, you had some, several objectives under this, and. Can I ask, can I ask a question, just, and I don't want to, I realize this would be a big, a big drop maybe, but the word, you know, the phrase promote the image of Kenmore, I know that that's a cool thing that we all do, but I think we're doing it just by doing, and I don't know that that needs to be a specific bullet point.
Everything should be, I agree, I mean, at the national level, state level, with our newsletters, I mean, we, this is ingrained in us. This is what we do and how we do it. I think if.
So that helps simplify that, but number two, where we could maybe then redo a couple of. Before we do that, Rob, I know you're lying, he has a comment on this.
So this is an example of where I struggle with adopting the budget and then a month later getting new goals. Because, like, so promote the image of Kenmore, I built the budget around promoting the image of Kenmore. I have, I pay thirty-six hundred a month to a public affairs firm for the number one purpose, to improve our image. And so if you take this goal off, now I'm questioning, did I put the resources in the right spot on the budget? So, and I've got so much of what Leslie Harris does that revolves around promoting the image of Kenmore. From a PR standpoint, so if you, if you are now saying, no, just doing it a good job as a city promotes our image, and we don't need to be spending money on Gallatin, and I don't need to have Leslie Harris doing all this stuff. Well, I feel like I'm getting some whiplash.
Good point.
Good point.
Can I add to that? Okay.
So it would be interesting.
Actually, you got, Lori's been in the queue, so.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
This might help. So if you just look at these four things, one thing I was going to suggest is reordering just the four bullet points. Keep the promote the image of Kenmore, and so let me just read what I, because we just did the advance, the public access and connections to the waterfront, I mean, that's just a huge thing, so move that to the top. Create a vibrant walkable downtown, that's exactly what we're still hoping on. And then maybe we could rework the business one, and support and recruit or something like that, businesses. But, but keep the promote the image, but it's not, I don't feel like, when I read it this time, I felt like it was a little out of order, it's like, you know, we're doing all this stuff, and we want to tell people about it versus we're telling people about what we're going to do, so now we're actually doing stuff, so I don't know if that helps or not, but. I, I do think we still need to continue to tell our story about what's going on, and I think there's value in that.
What I would. Brett. Well, I mean, that's what's so funny that you, because one of the, when you're talking about the PR, that was actually one of my things that I don't know that I ever talked to you about, but it's been on my mind, and it is the money we spend for the messaging. And I don't know, and I realized we want to tell the stories, that's, that's, but I, I actually wondered if that, if there is. Well, not, not understanding exactly what the value is in everything we do, I questioned a little bit the money we spent on the PR side, wondering how important is that, if it's.
So I don't know what your actual operational strategies are, but two, two things. One, and I don't have any idea how, but, but again, I think you have disproportionate impact with your size. So your name is known for a number of reasons, your activities are involved, I get all that, but I don't know how much of that. But I do know that as a city, your size, particularly sandwiched in between a bunch of stuff and your merging, you really do get a lot of splash, and I don't know if it's the marketing that you're doing on this, or exactly what all that, what accounts for that. That's one thing, if you would look at this and say, telling your story, if that's part of it, I don't know. The other thing I would say, and this is important, you work pretty hard to really enact and nest the administrative functionality of your organization to support your goals, your managers evaluation is framed by these goals, your budget. You've done an amazing job at making that connected, so you take your ideas and fund them, and you make them happen. So I think this point's a good one, in the sense, now the final thing I would say is that historically, you've been willing to accept, the model that I've suggested to you over time, is that today at this retreat, you're really not setting goals for the budget that just left the budget dock, that ship sailed, and so, so in effect, I would hope that they would be doing what you just said, sort of pulling the rug out from under a budget you already did. So typically, when we framed this discussion, we said, you're actually really setting goals, in this case, be it two thousand seventeen and eighteen. There's a recognition that what you do here, particularly you, because you, you have a lot of ongoing projects, still informs fully your existing budget, but the retreat at this time of the year is designed to look out for that next budget ship that's coming, so.
Then we need to not have, I mean, then our ears are on our goals. We're setting goals a whole year out.
Well, you've tried to do that, I mean, there has, the value in that is for two reasons. One, we, you know, leaves ships the future, so anticipating the future, and secondly, you do the retreat after you've done your budget. So, which, well, the only way you deal with that is get on front of it. So that's what we, you always try to do, is you really be casting your eye towards seventeen and eighteen on these discussions today, because you're not, unless you go back and amend your budget, your two thousand sixteen budget, right? You're not. Now, sometimes that can happen, some could happen in intervening moments, you would do that. The other thing that's happened is that you look at opportunities to use two thousand sixteen's budget to fund some discussions that have happened today, rarely are they new things, because your budget's left. It's gone, it's, it's gone, so.
So I guess, Rob, I would, I would see it different than you are.
Vibe and Melissa.
Uh, no.
No?
I didn't see it.
Nope, well, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So.
I thought you were recognizing it.
I'm sorry.
So the fact that we've discussed the budget, we've agreed to those spendings that are in there, and mostly we use the priority based budget system for that, I don't think it needs to be on this goal for us to still all have it as we discuss budgets every year. So I wouldn't say it's going to go away, and I wouldn't even say these things wouldn't be spent again next year, but we compare it to the, you know, priority based budget, things, the very detailed work that we do. So, so I guess I wouldn't see this as we're heading in a different direction, we're undermining you, we're trying to change direction. Does that make sense? It, to me, it feels like the details of the budget, we use a different system for that, rather than this, you know, I think this goal is well ingrained in us, it just doesn't feel like we have to call it out and say, we're going to keep working toward this, it's just like what we are, you have to spend money to keep doing what we do.
But from his manage.
Well, I just, I tend to put the resources where the goals are, and so, the whole reason I'm doing the Gallatin contract is because of that goal. Probably wouldn't be doing the Gallatin contract if you guys didn't have that bullet point. So if the bullet point goes away, I guess it's still adopted in the budget. But combined with the dollars in two years.
Okay. Alan, David, and Brent.
Several, several things. If all four of those come from our economic development plan, why can't we just reference, satisfy the goals of the economic development plan? However, Nancy just told us yesterday, it's time to revisit that economic development plan, and that needs to be updated. But the start of this whole conversation was how do we measure economic development, right? And, and to that, but then, I would think this is a perfect example of where we could ask the technology community out there, how can you help us do this, take this data from all these different sources and make it meaningful? How can we measure this, measure it in terms of additional commercial square footage, a number of jobs, a flow of jobs out and flow of jobs in, there are all these different things that need to be interpreted and combined to come up with some kind of a conclusion as to, you know, how well we're doing, whether it's paying off. How much does development contract contribute to an increase in the economic base of the city? I don't know how you measure all that. And maybe it's a job for, I don't think it's a job for the city council to figure out how to measure it. But I think it's a perfect example of where we can consult with somebody who can take all that data and, and make it meaningful.
So if you put in there, I mean, that was a discussion yesterday, that you wanted metrics for measuring effectiveness. The two things I, I looked at my notes and took away from that, was you wanted that, and you wanted to start talking or looking at having a more targeted focus, that those were the two things that came out of that. So that you could add that up under these bullets, just to keep that, connect that discussion yesterday to this one. David and then Brent.
Yeah, I guess, just because, for instance, we may re-shift or remove, promote image, I mean, I just think of all of the benefits that we're getting from Gallatin, look at all the benefits we're getting from what Leslie's doing. I would really hate to see that go away, because we have, at least I don't know of any metrics they're capturing, businesses that are looking at Kenmore because of some of the information that Gallatin gets out there. I look at some of the things I've been involved in because of Gallatin, like that ST three thing that I did down in Seattle. But, but there's other things, where we're getting the name of Kenmore out there, and that's just a huge benefit. And I would really hate to see that stop.
Brent and then Alan. So this, this PR marketing angle, it's exactly, it parallels so closely in my mind how I view the federal lobbying thing. And that's why, it just, my mind has. And that's why, it just, my mind has, I always have a hard time with these benefits that aren't tangible, or even remotely, and yet I know there's value there, and that's something, and so, I just, so that's it. I'm not saying it's not money well-spent, I just, it's the easy, low-hanging fruit for me to grab and say, this just doesn't make sense, and I don't understand it.
So here's a good, a good answer to that. How do you put the value on Gallatin and my getting involved in this Downtown Seattle Association and talking about Kenmore and our benefits that would happen from ST3? And since then, the people, I don't know who the heck they are, that have come up to me and said, thank you for being there. It was really great to know about Kenmore, it was really not great to know about things that are going on. How do you put a value on them? And that's all stuff that is just sort of added benefit.
Well, you're intertwined at a level that is so different than any of us, and that's why I think it's probably easier for you to see that value, because we, I mean, it's your life, whereas I don't, I don't see, I don't have that interaction even, not even on a, you know, weekly basis, let alone a hourly basis, so.
Just one thing I wanted to add, with this 2016-17, say 17, these are not short-term goals.
No.
These are long-term goals, and they aren't limited, if they're supposed to be limited to this year, and, or even this biennium, in this budget cycle, then they have to be much more restricted in specific goals than what they are. I see them as long-term goals, we're working towards these things. And the business about the image of Kenmore, yes, we need to promote the image of Kenmore. How we do it, multiple ways.
I'm hearing your manager say.
I'm not saying I don't want him to do it.
I'm hearing your manager say that he actually pays attention to this in an absolute on-the-ground way.
Well, and rightly so, because he's our employee, and we evaluate his progress based on how he satisfies the goals that we've set for him.
Exactly. And Alan?
So on the promote the image of Kenmore, I'm happy to leave it on.
Okay.
And I think there is some practical reason to have it there, because it depends on how money is spent and how we set priorities, so I'm good with that, but I would add just a little comment on the title, to continue to implement, if we in fact have to redo the plan, maybe something like update and continue to implement the economic development plan. So it needs to be updated, that's a big deal. So just to call that out.
More fluid.
Oh, my God.
Is that?
Well, actually, that's an important idea right there, because that would be a work plan item, right? Updating the economic development.
Was that in our?
Let's see. Nancy's already got it for the biennium.
It's gonna take some time, some energies, some resources, people.
So the suggestion is to say update and.
And continue to implement. Yeah. Just the word two, just add update and.
Do I hear any objection to that? Okay.
I wouldn't mind putting promote down in the bullet, but if people reading this think absolute priority, I don't know.
To read it, read it like Laurie was mentioning. Is that what you're saying?
It was a while ago. Sure, so I can restate it. So basically, the four bullet points, the four points from the economic development plan, I felt like that actually the last one, advance the public's access and connections to the waterfront, really should be the first one, because we just passed our walkways and waterway project thing, and this is all gonna be about moving.
So if you just moved the fourth bullet to the top, that would satisfy the conversation?
I actually would put promote the image at the bottom of the four.
So just switch the two.
And, you know, that'll get us there.
Yeah, that'd get us there.
That would get us there.
Are we including that fifth bullet point?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I'm gonna, no, I'm gonna get you that. Yeah, 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 yeah. That's.
Separate issue.
While we're on it, the one thing that I thought was, we've got support existing businesses, but remember we had that big discussion yesterday, and it really felt like that recruiting new or attracting new businesses or whatever seemed to be important, and that is something that, you know.
You could say recruit and support existing.
We could combine.
Right, you could say recruit.
Recruit and retrain.
Retain.
Retrain.
Retain.
Or support existing businesses and promote new businesses.
Yeah, and recruit is maybe too strong of a word.
It's not a business.
I think it's, does it sound like it was more than identifying and.
Attract.
Attract, right.
I like that.
Yes, that's.
So attract is, attract?
Yeah, otherwise it feels like you're being coercive.
But where are we gonna put them?
Well, so that was part of, that was kind of part of the thing, though, is that.
By recruiting new businesses, you better have somewhere to put them.
Right. No, well, that's what Nancy talked about, about this identifying locations where things can happen, or maybe it's underutilized property, too.
Are you, Rob?
What do you think about that, Rob? Are you on this whole business, because this is kind of new territory for us? I'm just curious. Your thoughts on this?
On attracting new businesses?
This whole idea of, we've kind of got two angles on it. One, it's like identifying potential areas of where if a business wanted to relocate here, where we could assist them, but then the flip side of that was the backend, where you've got the understanding of what's going on at the incubator, and why we're losing or not retaining a business.
Okay.
Do you remember that conversation, and kind of how that all, it's kind of, it's a real front-end backend thing, but I don't really know how to tie it together, and maybe it doesn't need to be.
And that's, I mean, if you get to that, that's pretty detailed.
That's like work plan.
Right, so how do, it feels like.
Capture the essence of that in a simple phrase.
Well, it seems like there's two kind of issues. One is the support existing businesses and attract new businesses.
Correct.
That's kind of one area. Then the second is to gather data so somebody can develop some property for them to land. Yeah, so it feels to me like those two are subtracted, is that?
Yeah, I can see that.
It's a lot of bullet points.
It is. That's why I tried to.
It was defended well.
Okay. Alan, and then I'd like to stop us for a minute and say, where are we in all this discussion?
These goals really shouldn't be too specific. And I think we may be getting there, but maybe I was trying to make it too specific. But the other point about where businesses can locate, I just want to throw this out, there are GIS programs that some cities use, and it's on their website. You can Google map, and you can see all these buildings that have vacancies. And that information is where businesses that are looking for new places to land, they go sites like that to try to find that information. They don't come and talk to the assistant city manager in the city to say, what's available here? By the time they get to talking to us in City Hall, they've thoroughly researched things online, and if we don't have all that kind of information online, then hey, they're gonna move on to some city that does. Now, are we big enough to do that? Do we have more than one vacancy that we might, you know, put on such a map? I don't know. But those are things that I think might come out of investing in a startup IT firm that could assimilate all this data, put it all together.
Or the hack-up, because they did things like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Brett, so we actually talked about this exact issue, like, I think, two years ago, because the technology was there, and that was part of, one of the reasons on the new website for the city, so that we could use it, it could be used in coordination as a business asset tool.
Or you need to maximize the use of that.
Yes, yes. And so that's part, that actually would fall into this goal in some way.
Yeah.
Yes.
Without trying to lay out the exact details of how you need to do it.
Goal number eight.
What's that?
Goal number eight.
To clarify that, you mean?
But I think it's less about, goal number eight is about the means of getting there. I'm talking, I mean, I'm talking about the end result product.
I think this is at such a level of detail, the conversation is useful to you, but I'm not sure you want to put this in the goal.
No. Not necessarily the program, no, but the general idea.
Well, maybe if we say support existing businesses and recruit new businesses, underneath that is to look at that, to get this data, attract new businesses. Part of attracting new businesses is to have enough space for them, so all of that falls under attractive businesses, so you can maybe go that way.
Support existing.
Support existing businesses and attract new businesses.
Yeah. Because to do that, you've got to have space for the company. They just leave off the new bullet.
Yeah.
Right. That worked. Okay, so just another one.
Yes, can we get, Rob, did you get that? I don't know, it's, in a way, I feel like it's a bunch of new stuff I'm adding to Nancy's work plan. What do you guys think?
Two things that I hear that would be added to a work plan. Okay. One is the idea, a hard, well, actually, three, one that she brought to the table. Now, it's update.
Yep.
Then, the second thing is to do an analysis of how to actually evaluate specifically a data-driven evaluation model for your economic development. Kind of, which we can do. I think the third piece is to become more targeted in your strategy towards specific businesses, to attract new businesses.
Yeah.
And Nancy's got that in her.
Yeah, I think all of that was in.
That's, okay. I think that's well said, because that actually was, the whole reason I wanted to kind of discuss this whole economic development thing, because I did believe it was so broad that it was losing its impact, and now that helps define it a little more.
Okay, good. Okay. But I don't think, attract the new businesses, do you need to put in there the, establish a measurement system? I don't think you need to do that.
I feel like we can talk that.
Right, I think you know that, that's something that you want to see happen as a result of that. Attracting businesses is the strategy part of that, so.
Yeah, by definition, if you're gonna attract somebody, you have to have a place to put them.
And the means of doing it.
Yeah, you have to gather your data, you have to do whatever you can to help that.
Right, yeah. So on this one, the change to two would really be update, continue in the first language, move, promote the image to the last bullet, use the last bullet and make it number one, and then change the third bullet in the ways we just talked about. Is that correct? Okay, Alan?
One additional thing, this, a couple of years ago, the buzzword in economic development was economic gardening, growing your own businesses, and the thought of attracting businesses away from someplace else was a zero-sum game, because they're attracting businesses from you, and it goes both ways. And so the best bet to grow your whole economics is to garden and grow your own businesses, and if you can attract those at the same time, fine. But now we're saying, okay, we want to work on new businesses to Kenmore, not necessarily new businesses, startups, but new businesses to Kenmore, and so we want to actively seek people to move here.
But some of the attract new businesses could be people that came through our incubator.
That's true.
But I guess that would be an existing business if they came.
But those are retaining and growing the businesses that are already here. That's the gardening concept that.
So I guess are we trying to get new businesses from outside of the city here, or are we trying to support existing businesses, which also means having a place for.
Yeah.
I heard both the discussion yesterday. I heard both. I, Alan's raising a nuanced but important point. I heard that, this conversation yesterday, say that the strategy would become one that would, in addition to growing your own, the incubator and variety plants, look towards businesses that are not currently here, that you would.
That's why you want to enhance the image of the city. And promote the city in many ways.
You want them to want.
That's where you want sidewalk.
Right, right. So that's, that's the attract new businesses. I think the piece underneath it, that really got to how do we measure this, got to the, sort of the double bind you're in on growing new businesses, but I don't think it's safe, they don't have any space. So, but that's down at a work plan level, I don't think you want to get in there with that. So that seems to be clear to me. Up here, you said you wanted to move goal number six, which is the parks improvement and financial plan, to five.
Michael, I'm having an awful hard time keeping track of this, and I would be happy to be your writer's secretary if we could start at the top and like see where we're at.
Sure, okay, that would be good, then I could look at this, and then, and that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I won't write out the whole goal, but we'll just do it as a key word.
So, so.
So what's number one?
One is as is, nothing's changed there.
Number one.
Transportation.
Multimodal transportation.
Number one is multimodal transportation. And it's the state.
Can't see that. Can't see it, oh, I'm sorry.
One's in the line, sorry.
Just write on the other one.
Or we could bring it.
Just write on that one.
Oh, that's good, I didn't want to lose that in case you need to refer to it.
No, I meant the one that Rob's carrying.
So number one was multimodal transportation, and that, nothing changed.
Okay.
All right. Number two was update and, and that was, and continue, your economic development plan. So it's continue to implement. So the new language was update and continue, dot, dot, dot.
Yeah.
On economic development, you can put print, just.
Oh, oh, oh.
Yeah, yeah. And then.
It better.
And then under that, though, the bullets, this is where it becomes important. The first bullet is advance public access, and then, then, dot, dot, dot.
And that's the water one, right?
Correct.
And what's for H2O?
And then the second bullet, given this discussion, was the same, create a vibrant walkable downtown, so it's, it's walkable downtown, and no change in that language.
Well, thank you.
I didn't see it coming.
Okay.
And then the third bullet was attract new businesses and support existing businesses. And there was a series of discussions underneath that, but again, we're not gonna put that here, we know what those are. Correct? Okay. Okay, and then the final one was promote the image of Kenmore, and that kept you at four bullets.
Okay.
Then, I'd like to suggest that the bullets are not in order of priority.
They aren't, I think they're just moving around in case people thought they were.
Okay. Plus, remember, we have, there's expressive value, and you just passed the bond issue and just think that waterfront pieces, whatever, in that discussion.
There's some categories of number two.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So that there's expressive value, let's tell people. Okay, so then, the discussion that I heard before, we'll go, we'll start with, since we're at goal number three, was to move it to six, which would mean it would no longer be bolded, and that goal is to continue to seek funding mitigation of state impacts on state's transportation system, would move to six.
Okay.
So you just take a note, yeah. So that would mean.
So number six is gonna be the.
So what that, excuse me, what that would mean is now, goal number three actually now is your existing goal number four.
Which is what?
Lakewood.
Lakewood.
So number three is Lakewood.
Okay.
Number four becomes ST3.
Is that, is that what we agreed on?
Yeah, parks.
And then, your number five goal becomes parks improvement and financial plan.
So what do we mean by that one?
That's to continue to implement a parks improvement and financial plan.
It's the existing.
I'm just reading off your goal sheet, yeah.
So it includes all our new bond issue parks and funding them and going operations.
And then number six now becomes the old number three, which is mitigate state impacts. Number six is mitigate, mitigate state impacts on transportation system. And then goals seven and eight remain the same. And goal seven, to refresh your memories, the watershed quality, water, water quality issues affecting the city, and eight is your IT goal. So that's kind of how the discussion's unfolding. Yep. Yep, I'll try. Okay, Alan?
I question whether we even need six, if we're not gonna be able to convince the state to spend any money on mitigation. But secondly, where does, or does it fit in here, all our efforts to control or direct what's done on the 520 project in Kenmore? Yeah, just because we had that. Just because we had that site development agreement, doesn't, doesn't mean that our efforts are totally over, I don't think.
Right, I remember last year you talked about this, you wanted it, you wanted that out and visible. Your intention was you wanted mitigation.
We have it on one of our legislative agendas, which probably be on goals.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that give you money for an overpass?
Yeah.
No, no, no.
Mitigation money.
Oh, mitigation money for an overpass. I get you, number six, okay. But what about, what about the business, the heavy industry and the Lake Point project, the 520 west of the west? Does that need to be, I mean, if it's not on a goal here, that we say, and to Rob, we don't worry about it anymore, it's a done deal? I don't think so. I think we still need to stay on top of all that.
Wouldn't that be watershed and water quality issues, and it would not be under that?
Also, successful Lake Point project, successful means it's got to be moving ahead, and I think it has a lot of implications there.
Okay, well, if you're happy with it not being specifically spelled out in the goals, it's been a big deal to a lot of people, is what I'm saying. What do you think, Rob?
I think it fits under several goals, I'm okay with, I know it's important to you. I don't think you need to have the rest of the west as a goal.
Yeah. Okay, so we have it with this?
Well, if we have a successful Lake Point program that's moving ahead, it's not, they're not going to be able to know all of your goals.
Exactly. They'll be better used.
Okay. Comments, questions, before we put a ramp on this, Lori?
So, to Stacy's question about the dates on the goals, do you answer that? I don't think I've ever really paid that much attention. So would be considered these goals as just the one year, 2017?
You know, of course, that's ultimately up to you. The, the two things about that, one, from a just professional view on my part, is that I'd just like to see you talk today about the future. And so your budget has left the dock, as we talked about before, so it doesn't prevent you from doing some things today within your existing budget. But the big reason you do it like this is so Rob has a huge heads-up between now and November, when you pass a budget, or when the next one is, if there are particulars, new goals, which gets to my second point, and that is that in some ways, it hasn't mattered as much as some of my clients, because your goals have been pretty stable, they've just been phased. So you've kept those same things there, and they've been multi-year projects that you're now implementing. But, you know, the, sort of the technical answer for me is I'd like to see what you do today be for 2017, because your budget's already left. Now, there's a lot of things in here, your budgets you're already doing. So, it, where it would get weird is if you just laid a whole new thing out. You just came out here and said, you know what, we have a whole new emphasis on it, and I'd like to do it this year. Now your manager's going, well, what do I, and I've seen that happen. And it isn't that you couldn't do it, but at that point, this, but this kind of conversation changes, because then the manager's going to look at you and go, well, then what do you want me not to do? Because I can't, unless you're going to now pass some ordinance or create a tax, give me new resources, I can't do what we just said we're going to do in the movie. So that's been the issue behind that.
And remember, the biggest thing is we are basing this evaluation on these goals.
Well, you are, and you just heard it today. He said, when he goes, wait a minute, you just changed it up, I just put money in there. And, and, because he tightens up his budget, puts his people in play. And I would argue that's one of the reasons this council, well, the NAMM ever worked with, accomplishes what it sets out to do, and that they've actually been long-range things. These have been things that you've been looking out over time to be able to do. So I think having that tight synchronization is really important, so.
So I guess, as we look at the title of this page, the question in my mind is, every January, our habit has been to look at our goals again. So instead of having two years, maybe we should just say it's one year. So this should have technically said 2016 goals, and we are now putting in place 2017 goals.
Correct.
Instead of having two years, that's a different.
Now, you own a annual biennium to your budget?
You have a biennial budget, yes.
Yeah, but still, I'd like to then that. Unless you do adjustment mid-budget.
We do, we do.
But every year, we single our goals.
Well, right, you do.
So that's, that's.
So I don't think it needs to coordinate with the budget, the biennial.
It does make it easier just giving it to somebody, or showing it to somebody, or reading it, if you just look at a year and you go, wow, okay, there's 2016. That's pretty clear. And you don't have to think about budgets or anything else when you're looking at this, because most people.
Know we have a right to change it.
Right, exactly, just like we have a right to change your budget. So it, I, from a simplicity standpoint, I wouldn't have a problem going to just one year, but I also understand that maybe there's reasons with a biennial budget that it needs to be.
The main thing I want to make, please have goals if you really want to put your fund, that's the thing. Because then what happens is it gets, starts to get weird at the staff level. Because they have, you have these expressive goals, I'm working with a client right now, they've got pretty specific goals, they've had them for like six years, and so the first question I ask them is, can I see your budget? What, and your budget, are you doing to cause these to happen? And the answer was, nothing. So, so, and, and, and I'm in this organization working with them because they're upset with their administrative staff not doing things that they want them to do. So, see what I'm saying? So now, so now here, don't, we don't need to connect it to the budget, I, I kind of actually think you do.
We also don't need to correct something that's not broken either.
No.
So we could just always call it two years, so we could call this one a 2018.
We could, but we meet again in January of 18, and we redo them.
Right.
So, I mean, it's got nothing to do with biennial budget.
I prefer just have one year.
Yearly set of goals, yeah, I mean, because we meet every year and set the goals, so.
I, I don't care, this is fine, this is my life, I'm never getting back discussing this. Goals, I think this is, I think we're way off track as far as that goes, but that's just.
But it's your goal, so.
I, either way, I don't know, I'm fine, so whatever you guys like.
Again, I consider these long-term goals, and many of them you don't, I mean, it's not like we're going to get these done by December 31st, 7, 6, 17.
No.
They're long-term.
But you do adjust these goals every year.
You're up on that, yeah.
You do adjust them every year. But you do them in very, this is an incremental, very detailed kind of discussion, it was important to you. Things have happened, bit things have happened as a result of your goals between last year and now. Huge, but actually, it's a cost of reordering it here a little bit, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on this?
Any questions, Rob, on your side?
Yeah, that's, that was going to be the next one. Do you have any questions about what it means to be successful in this goal matrix?
I don't think so, just the fact that Milton's gathered the data necessary.
I think we took that a while, I'll wait.
But does it, it probably falls under one of those?
Yeah, it falls under the bullet point number three.
Right.
Yeah, attract the new businesses, that's what you want.
Yeah, that's.
How do you, how do you track and keep if you don't have place?
And there's also underneath that, yesterday's discussion was some metrics, particularly as to how we're, how we're biwaying specific metrics.
How many businesses are leaving, why are they leaving?
How many square feet, how many, what's the dollar per square foot they're renting out, so.
Right. Okay. Okay, I don't know, I think we're finished here.
I think we're finished.
Yeah, thank you again for working really hard to get through it.
And take a jimson salsa break.
So unless, unless there's any new business to come before the council, this meeting is adjourned.
Okay.
Good job.
Mr. Carleton?
What's that?
Mr. Rob, was that on there?